Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Time is 7:03. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Commissioner Stephen?
Present.
Commissioner Sims?
Here.
Commissioner Dejeanay?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Vice Chair Korsak?
Present.
Chair Barnes?
Here. Thank you. At this time, Commissioner Stephan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of same. Can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion from Commissioner Baker, second from Commissioner Sims. Electronic vote. Waiting on two. Still waiting. Ah, there we go. No. Says you haven't voted. Apparently her. Well, minor technical difficulties, so. What do we now? Spence is killing me. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Stephen?
Now it came on.
Oh, it came back on?
Well, no, it's because I hit end vote. Her vote still didn't get recorded. I just terminated the electronic vote. Sorry about that. So, continue.
Commissioner Stephen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sims? Commissioner Dejeanay?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Korsak?
Yes.
Chair Barnes?
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Agenda is approved. Now to the consent calendar. Has one item, approval of the minutes from the meeting of January 24th. I get a motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion from Commissioner Baker.
I'll second.
Second from Vice Chair Korsak. Want to just do a voice?
Can I get the mover and seconder one more time, please?
Movers, Commissioner Baker. Second is Vice Chair Korsak.
All right, let's try one more time.
All right. Here we go. Please vote.
I can't vote. Mine says second.
Oh, it has you down as the seconder?
It says second, and then it says no and abstain.
That's very odd.
It's collusion.
All right. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
I abstained. I was an absentee.
All right. Opposed? We have six in favor and one abstention.
There you go.
Motion passes. We're on a roll tonight.
I bet we are.
All right. Should I end the vote, Ashley? Okay. All right. So, things can only look up. Next item on the agenda is the public comment portion of the meeting. Any person wishing to address the commission, either under the public comments section of the agenda or scheduled items, must fill out a request to speak form. So, if you'd like to speak, please fill out a form and give it to Ashley. And do we have any speakers on the list?
We have two public speakers, Rafael Brugeras and, actually, I do apologize.
Mr. Brugeras.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. I want to talk about Tuesday's study session. Because we had an opportunity to learn a lot about our budget. Our Chief Financial Officer informed us, or he informed me, how our budget is structured and how things are paid out and what brings in revenue and what sustains the city to pay our bills on time. Okay? And it was interesting to know that we have a lot of housing, a lot of houses that are being built in the last, last year, in the last few years. And we also know that each house pays property taxes, hopefully on time. And from that, that money goes to the county. None of it goes to Moreno Valley. And it goes to the state. And in return, we get 1%, and out of the 1%, we get 10% of that. Think about that. We get very little from the housing market. But he mentioned industrial buildings that we have in the city of Moreno Valley. And that's only 20% of those, but they bring the bigger revenue to help us finish paying the bills on time. Those are the ones that are very important to the city of Moreno Valley, the businesses, because they pay quite a few in revenue. And a lot of it, we keep. Does not go to the county or to the state. It belongs to Moreno Valley. So going through the, through the amendment, planning, I learned something, because I read through all through it. And there's something there that taught me why I'm here and why you're here, because it's very important to know why you're here. And as a commissioner, as a committee member in my own committee, I look after certain things in our city when they come through my committee. And this is one. And as a plan, goal for one, to enhance, the word is to enhance, Moreno Valley as a desirable place in which to live, work, shop, and do business. When we grow our city together, this is what occurs. To enhance, to bring desirable people to live in our city, to live, to work, to shop, and to do business. We did very well in last year. But I'll talk about that later in the next one. Thank you so much for being part of the commission. I appreciate each and one of yous, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras. Any other speaker slips?
No more speaker slips.
All right. We'll close the public comment portion of the meeting. Onto non-public hearing items. First is case number PEN 19-0002. Applicants to City Moreno Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The item will be presented by Associate Planner Claudia Manrique.
Thank you.
Chair Barnes and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we have the 2018 Annual General Plan Progress Report. Government Code Section 65400 requires that cities submit an annual progress report on the status of their general plan and progress on its implementation to the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, OPR, and the Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. Prior to submittal to the state, the annual report must be presented to City Council for review and acceptance. As a procedural matter, staff is bringing the annual report to you tonight for review and recommendation to the City Council. It will be going to the City Council on March 5th. Will be enough time for us to meet the deadline of the state, which is April 1st. The 2018 General Plan Annual Progress Report summarizes the city of Moreno Valley's progress towards implementing the goals, policies, and programs of the city's 2006 general plan. It covers the period from January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2018. The annual report also includes a report of major projects and general plan amendments that were approved by this Planning Commission and City Council in 2018. We had four major projects and five general plan amendments approved during this period. The general plan amendments include approval of a 417-unit multifamily apartment complex in a 45-lot, single-family subdivision. Both these projects are consistent with our general plan and its goals and provides a wider range of housing opportunities for both our present and future residents. Other projects were industrial-related and will be meeting our goals to bring more jobs to the city. As part of the annual report, HCD requires reporting on housing element implementation. 2018, we had 434 new residential units finalized or occupied by their new owners or renters. This includes 10 apartment units, 423 single-family residents, and one accessory dwelling unit. This shows a positive progress towards this, for the city to meet its 2014 to 2021 regional housing need allocation. This concludes my report for, on our annual report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions of staff on this item? No? Mr. Sims, no questions on this item? Wow. Well, I have a couple of questions, and they're more curiosities than anything that, than anything else. I saw that there's an initiative 1.9.3 that supposedly is a funding mechanism that creates funding towards preparation of the general plan. Where are we in that process? Do we have enough money? That it might happen on a timely manner?
I don't have the status of the funding of that.
Okay.
We do have.
If I may, Honorable Chair, Commission members, it is my understanding that the general plan amendment funding is available and...
I was just curious. Okay, thank you. And then there's also mention of a new element to the general plan, the environmental justice element.
That would be a new element that would be proposed with an upcoming general plan update. So it's not one that we have in the general plan right now. It's an optional element that we would anticipate looking into and possibly bringing forward with the next general plan update.
What is that?
Well, we have, actually, so I'll let you know quickly, we have in mind three new elements. One would be environmental justice, which speaks to putting attention to disadvantaged communities and how we engage with them, how we interact with them in development, et cetera. Economic development is another one. We would be looking at economic development policies and things having to do with economic development in the city. And the third was...
A healthy community.
Thank you. Policies, programs, and things that would help us on the path of being, having more healthy communities-type actions and activities in the city.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Mr. City Attorney, do we take public comment on a...
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well then, let's open the public comment portion. First speaker, Mr. Brugeras.
Once again, good evening, Commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. I went to read something on page 12, and it's from simple annual report comments, contents. The 2018 General Plan Annual Progress Report summarized that the city of Moreno Valley progressed towards implementing goals, policies, and programs of the city's 2026, 2006 general plan. It covers the period from January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2018. We had a wonderful year last year. The staff read it. A lot of things got approved, and there's a lot of things that you see now being built out there in the streets. Eucalyptus, houses up on Sonomy Ranch, you know, all over the city, there's something being developed, okay? And that's a good thing, like I said. I'm grateful for 2018, and I'm grateful for each and one of yous being here in 2018, doing what we need for the city of Moreno Valley. Like I said, is to enhance the city, to do things. And I'm going to read something on page 11. The city of Moreno Valley incorporated on December 3, 1984. The city's first general plan was adopted on September 8, 1988. The last comprehensive update of, of the general plan was approved by the city July 11, '26. Okay, then the other one is about the housing that we did in 2014. That was 12 years and seven months ago, okay? What I'm asking you, because you're the one that are going to advise the council, to advise the mayor and the council members. We need a study section here. We need to see if we could update some of these things when it comes to zones, changes, and things like that, so we can avoid problems that we have occurred in 2018. That should be done. If you give any advice to the staff, that we should have a study session, so we, we can have the public come and give comments on something that's been around for 12 years and seven months. Okay? I think there should be improvement and updates here or revised things. Don't let that go. We can avoid things to happen, to, we can avoid these from happening at the next meeting and the next year after this, if we try to update this 12-years-and-seven-month general plan.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras. Next speaker, Roy Blacher.
Thank you, Chairman Barnes, for asking the pertinent question. Where is the general plan update? I can, as my summary selects, in 2017, City Council passed $1.75 million budget to pass a general plan. We're sitting on our hands. You come through here with the, with the donut shop and gas station that went five years, it didn't get passed? You know you got a problem. You know it, Jeff. Down Paris Boulevard and down Cottonwood. It didn't get solved because of this body, and this city council doesn't act. I came with a proposal in 2017 before the city council and this planning commission to put a general plan together. On the Mill Creek model, we could have done it in a year for half the money, $8.75, $875,000. And this city suffers. Where is the Hillside Ordinance revision that came before this body three years ago that didn't get done? Because Rafael was right. The property tax split you get off of industrial buildings, those high cube warehouses, more of that percentage goes into the city budget. Housing is a loser across the board, except high-end housing. All those projects he talked about cost this city money, more money than it provides in services. 250,000 square foot and above warehouses give you a two-to-one positive payoff. Nothing comes close. I don't write the rules, but I know how to use them. I don't think nobody around here does. Because I have put it on there, and you all got a standing invitation to come and debate this, put it out in the public, each one of you and staff does, City Council, and everyone else. Because this community suffered for decades, since 1984 of December, when this city got started, we made about every stupid decision we could make. And that's why income on inflation and population adjustment has went down 30% from 2000 to 2015. We can't change the past. The only thing we can do is affect the future. That's part of your responsibility. That's part of your job to carry it out. It ain't getting done. It's not getting done because nobody's cooperating. My phone number is 951-208-9967. I have not heard one response from any of you on making this city better. It's time that changes. I'm throwing out the welcome mat. It's up to you to accept it and pass the senior project.
Thank you, Mr. Blacher. No other speakers. We will close the public comment portion. Questions? Deliberation, debate? A motion? Donuts? I have a question. The target housing is 5,500 units. It's not likely that we get 10%, 15% of that this year, maybe 20%. Where does that number come from?
Arena numbers are assigned to us from the state, from HCD. And these numbers are for us to have space available in the city for these numbers of units, not to actually have these units built by the end of the housing cycle five.
Oh, I see.
Which is the cycle we're in right now, is cycle five.
Or mandate is only to have room for them, not to actually create them? Okay. And what's the penalty if we were not to have room for them?
Didn't have room for them, then our housing element would be out of consistency with the state, and we would have to work with the state on fixing that. Soon, we're going to have a new round of arena numbers, and we'll be going through the housing element again. By middle of next year, we should be getting the arena numbers, and then the housing element will be due in 2022.
All right. Just curious. Thank you.
I have a question. Is, is that the same principle that the governor was talking about, where he was suing some cities because they didn't follow the guidelines for having enough housing? I believe there was like 75 on the list.
Yes. If you went on HCD's website right now, the cities that he mentioned in his speech earlier this week were all on the list of non...
Compliant.
Compliant cities. So it was sort of just bringing the spotlight on them.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Ready?
I've had it.
Okay. I move that we approve resolution number 2019-10.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second? We're going to go voice or electronic? I have a motion and a second, so please vote.
I'm the mover.
Okay.
Movers. Shakers.
Well, you're just an observer tonight. I think we're going to have to do a voice roll call. Yeah.
Vice Chair Korsak?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Stephen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sims?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chair, I'm sorry. Chair Barnes?
Yes.
Commissioner Dejeanay?
Yes. It was unanimous, right? Just for clarification. Thank you.
Ignore the screen. It's only an illusion. Motion carries seven to zero. All right. Moving right along. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing item. PEN 16-0066, applicant Joel Mendez. Do we have a staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item will be presented to you by Associate Planner Julia Discotto.
Good evening, Chair Barnes and members of the Planning Commission. The applicant today is Joel Mendez, and he is requesting the approval of a 20-unit senior apartment project. The .9-acre site is located on Webster Avenue between Hickok Street and Indian Street in the Village Office Residential Zone of the Village Specific Plan 204. Properties to the north are zoned Village Commercial Residential with mostly improved commercial sites. The properties to the east, west, and south are zoned Village Office Residential with some vacant land and existing single-family and multifamily development. Further south is zoned in the Village Residential Zone. The project satisfies all the requirements of a density bonus that allows for additional units. The, the code provides for 15 units to the acre. However, because this project does, does qualify for the density bonus, they're allowed additional units. The requirements include, require that the applicant provide amenities to the complex in order to meet the density bonus. The requirements, or the, some of the amenities include a recreation room, a laundry area, and outside common areas. The, the units will all have access from two stairways, one on each end, and also an elevator. There are 10 units on each floor with two sets of stairs, as I mentioned, and the elevator. All units will be one-bedroom units, approximately 548 square feet each. Each unit is provided with private open space and covered parking. The Spanish architecture style includes arches, a tile roof, ivory stucco walls, brown trim, and stone accents with a decorative block wall surrounding the project. The project will be accessed from Webster, and the driveway will go linear north to the project with access for all the, the apartment complex, as well as the, any emergency vehicle will have an emergency vehicle turn around at the end of the site. The project qualifies as a Class 32 categorical exemption, 15332 for infill projects. The project was noticed in the newspaper, posted on the site, and sent to all property owners within 300 feet, and to date, I have had no inquiries regarding the project. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission certify the project is exempt as a Class 32 categorical exemption for infill projects and approved Penn 16-0066, a 20-unit senior apartment complex. This concludes my report, and myself and the applicant are both here to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of the staff? Did we hear from the applicant first? Should we hear from the applicant first? Would the applicant like to speak?
Hi, my name's Joel Mendez and I'm the applicant. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Go ahead.
And I actually do have my engineer and architect here.
All right.
Mine's more general.
Yeah, if you have questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I do. Sir, can I ask how much these rentals will cost per month?
They're going to be anywhere between a thousand to a thousand fifty.
And it says here that only three, approximately three or more dwelling units will comply with the American Disabilities Act, but if this is for seniors, do you have plans to actually have more of the units for disabled or people that might need the additional help? It just seems to me that three units is not a lot if you're dealing with a senior population.
What page are you looking at, please?
I am looking at page six of twenty-one, packet page two-fifteen, under Community Developed Building Division.
That's a building code requirement and it's stating that three or four shall comply. It's not saying that they, that all of them have to, but that's, that's a standard building code requirement.
Is that for senior housing or is that for general housing in particular?
That's for all multifamily.
Okay, so my question of the applicant, do you have plans to maybe add more additional based on you're dealing with a senior population that would have more, more issues probably?
I believe all of them are identical as far as square footage, so we can accommodate pretty much all if needed.
They'll be convertible, in other words?
Every single one will be identical, so they're all to code as far as the accessibility. Like, so let's say from the toilet or the doors, they'll all be the same.
And it's a fifty-five over?
Fifty-five and older.
It would be sixty-two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sixty-two.
Sixty-two. I got my AARP console. Is that fifty-five?
Commissioner Stephen?
You said that the rents were going to be about a thousand fifty?
Correct.
Is that income sensitive where they have to qualify or is it just going to be a thousand fifty?
No, there's going to be guidelines obviously to qualify.
Okay.
A thousand fifty.
So it will be income sensitive? Okay.
I do have a couple of, so I, there's an office, there's an office component. Is that, is that office staff full-time?
It will be staff full-time, nine to five, yeah.
Nine to five, okay. And is there going to be a gated, gated access in the front or is that just an open driveway?
It's going to be open driveway.
I have, I have questions. I don't know if you want to answer this or is this a staff question? But on the, on the title sheet of the site plan, in fact, that one there, I was looking at the land-covered area because it just looks like they're, I like the project, but you're packing a lot of stuff on relatively small parcel of land. And so, yeah, I was, out of curiosity, was looking at the land coverage percentages and I, my math doesn't come up the same. I'm coming up with forty-eight percent coverage on the math there. So if you go, I don't, if you look at, look under the scope of work section there where it has apartment areas, and these, I am assuming not, they're not inclusive of overhangs for the roof area or anything like that, but these are, took the, I think these were five-hundred-and-forty-eight square feet, do the math, and then anyhow, and then the recreation and office number, anyhow, you sum up twelve-thousand-five-twenty-four and the sixteen-sixty-six and the four, I can't read that now, forty-six something. It comes up more than twelve thousand. Comes up to almost nineteen thousand. So anyhow, I just, I'm going to do the math. It comes up to be forty-eight percent rather than thirty-two percent. So I don't know if that meet, if does that-
But the second floor doesn't cover the lot, it's on top of the first floor.
Oh, there you go. See, I was, very good.
Unless you're going to offset it.
No, I'm good. Thank you.
No problem.
I was, I was packing a lot, packing a lot into a five-pound bag there. All right. Okay, that's good.
No need for you to answer that one.
No need. Good job. And I did go to Cal Poly. That's not an endorsement on that. All right. My other question was, let's not get away from that stuff. On the, so on the, there's talking to board letter or the commission letter and then on the, and in the conditions, there's this talk about to qualify for the senior, there's this commitment. So my question to, more or less to staff is, is so what's, what is the commitment? I guess, is that memorialized in this? Is, because once something's approved as this is senior and they can build it as a senior complex, but let's just say, you know, ten years from now or something like that. I can't see where there would be a lack of seniors, but I may live there. But anyhow, the, at some point, but at the, at the end of the day, what's, what stops it from being changed? Well, how does the city enforce that commitment?
If the city finds that the applicant hasn't complied with the conditions of approval, then we, they would have to come back to the Planning Commission. Maybe I can ask-
Certainly. As with any conditional use permit, if there is a violation of the conditions, there's a notice and then potentially a revocation hearing before the Planning Commission for a revocation of the CUP.
But this isn't a CUP, it's just a plot plan.
This is just a plot plan, so, so I, yeah. Well, I, no, I, I mean, whether it, it is an entitlement, so I would assume the city has some rights to step in if the conditions aren't, but you would think a commitment means, I don't know. I wear a ring, I'm committed. So Valentine's Day, I guess, I mean, what is the commitment?
Yes, sir.
Well, the commitment is a condition of approval number twelve and, and I apologize, I didn't realize it wasn't a conditional use permit. But approval of the project is a binding agreement with the developer and if he breaches that agreement, city has remedies administratively and in court.
All right. All right. And then, you know, in the conditions, there's all these different things about, you know, these are probably, a lot of these are boilerplate, but there's like all these different, now that I'm looking at, but there's a whole bunch of different things where there's has to be a, there's an election to, let me find one here. Oh, somebody else has a question. I'll, I'll come back to my question.
I have a question, staff. And I don't know whether it applies to approval of the project or not, but I am curious. Condition forty, proposal will be subject to the approval of the Eastern Minnesota Water District. I know that area is, the water system in that area is extremely old. I worked on the Habitat for Humanity project on Myers and unbeknownst to them going into the project, they had to build a quarter-mile of water line to meet the fire flow. And if Webster's in the same shape, they're going to have a very expensive addition to their project. Has there been, you, are you aware of any water line upgrades in Webster, in that block? I know it's an eastern question really, so.
Yes, I'm not aware of any.
Something you might want to look into because it costs Habitat and the city a lot of money. And then the other question I had is more informational. Condition one-twenty-three talks about funding source for a stormwater, for stormwater utility service. Is that a fund that allows the city to step in and maintain water quality, onsite water quality components for new development? Because I'm sure that the water quality components are privately maintained by the project.
Sorry. That's a special district's condition regarding, and it's one of their standard if the Land Development Division requires the funding source. So they would determine it project by project if it's, if it's required. Michael, do you have any comment to that?
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Michael Lloyd with the Land Development Division of Public Works. Yes, all projects are required to either ballot into our NPDS stormwater program or provide an endowment. So that's up to the applicant in terms of how they wish to move forward, but we do require them be a part of our program to recoup costs and pay fees.
And that's a fund that just sits there until private maintenance isn't-
So, so there's different activities within our stormwater program. There's administrative. We conduct inspections of existing facilities. As you referred to there, there are existing basins that we collect money so that they can be either retrofit, rehabbed, whatever is needed in the future for those facilities that we maintain. Multifamily is viewed as a commercial and so the developer is responsible for maintaining the buyer retention that's proposed.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Can I build off of that? So on like this MPD, that was one of them, that you get an option A or B, you know, you can do this or do, you know, curtain A or curtain B. And is there a set fee? I mean, is the developer can just open a book or come talk to you and say, oh, it's going to cost me X dollars and I can just pay and I, because I'm the sole one ballot, I do my one, I agree to pay a fee or-
Correct. So if they, so choose to ballot into the program where the fee is assessed every year on their parcel, it's a parcel tax. That, that fee is set by council and we bring it to council every year, basically for an inflationary adjustment, but it's covered by Prop two-eighteen. So there's the issue of if we decide to make changes, we obviously have to open it up to a vote again, to any type of increase or change.
So, and there was another one here about the-
There's a lot of them.
There's a lot, yeah. There's, so each one of them where you have a, there's a ballot, there's already a Prop two-eighteen nexus study that established a fee that you can opt into.
That is correct.
Okay. And that's well-established and-
Yes.
Known thing you could, when you're doing a performer on a project, you can just find it.
That, that is correct. And that information, if, if the, in fact, as part of the balloting process, that's part of the information provided as part of the ballot that they're either checking yes or no.
All right, good. Apologize for not doing my math. About the second floor sits on top of the first floor.
Not always, so there are exceptions. Wouldn't worry about it. I have a question, I guess, of the applicant and it has to do with security. I know there'll be a perimeter fence on the three sides other than the street. Is there any security into the building area itself? Being seniors, I don't know that we can require it, but I'd be a little concerned.
Actually, we initially had the idea of putting in the gates, but because of the fire department, we were not, we couldn't comply with their requirements. So initially, we absolutely had it in the original plan.
And there's no solution to that problem?
I can acquire the lot next door and build another twenty and then we go around.
There you go.
You want us to condition to do that?
Easy.
Probably not. The issue was the, what, the stacking?
Yes.
All right. You couldn't slide the gate in past the visitor parking so that it was sufficient to? And I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel here, but for a senior complex, the ability-
We betted it for-
Not going to be able to run down and somebody stealing their stereo out of their car.
Yeah, all right.
We had several conversations trying to see if we could make it work and because of the parking and the stacking requirement and the ADA parking that's required and the size of the lot, it didn't work.
I get it and I'm not, I guess, mandating that we change something, but it's, it's a concern, so. And then speaking of security, condition twenty-nine, which requires sight lighting, it's probably the same for all projects, but I know I used to buy a lot of hundred-and-fifty-watt light bulbs for my grandmother. So in a senior complex, is, should the lighting be enhanced? Because-
The code has specific requirements for lighting and multifamily, so we would follow the code.
But not specific for seniors.
It's not, no.
I didn't think so. Just curious.
As long as they don't spill over into the other sites, they could increase it. Yeah.
Right, that's just a minimum that they have to meet.
Right.
So they could, yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, on the, on the first, on the first floor, a little, I think there are three-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot little backyards on the first floor.
Private open space?
Private open space. Who maintains that?
We do.
Okay. All right. So the homeowners or the property maintains that?
Correct.
Okay.
Question, no? Commissioner Harris?
Yes, I was wondering, I couldn't tell if there was a area that was covered for the seniors to get from their unit to the parking area, like to protect them from, like when we have like real bad rain and stuff like that. Is that anything that was?
If they're coming out, yeah, from the, coming out of the apartments to the carports, it's not that way, yeah.
Just thinking of a senior, you know, with, you know, if they have a cane and a purse and an umbrella and they're trying to carry groceries and stuff that, you know, it would be easier if they had, you know, protection.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Want to hear public comments?
If I could make one more-
Yes.
Correction. I was informed that the state law is, has been changed and it is fifty-five and over.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. One more question.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes. If, if this apartment, five years down the road, you decide to put it on the market and sell it, do, is everything in the conditions of approval? Do they all still apply? I guess this is for the staff. So, okay.
Yes.
They would follow the project?
Okay.
Depends what the land-
Thank you.
All right. With that, let's open the public comment portion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. First speaker is Mr. Ritchie.
Hello, I'm part of the management for the Casa Linda, Casa Buena Apartments, which are on either side of this project and I just had a couple of concerns. The point you made about water is spot-on because one of the people that I've talked to, I do marketing and also the maintenance, so I talk to people there to find out how the street actually is and I spend a lot of time there and water's a huge concern. That water main is, has issues. The water pressure there is terrible and there's going to be issues. So what, the one person who upgraded his house had to do was actually, he had a choice. Either he could improve the water main or he could put in fire sprinklers. Fire sprinklers was a lot cheaper, so he did that. So, so that's one of the issues that I'm very, a bit worried about as one of the people around there. Other one is the traffic increase. With the warehouses, you've had a huge increase in traffic there. So if you can look into some type of speed bumps or something and going out from Webster to Hickock, it can be dangerous sometimes or a lot of time. It's a real hassle to go out there. And the third one is street lighting. It has improved a lot of the neighborhood. I appreciate the help of code enforcement, the pop team and the city attorney to make that street a lot better than it has been. So there's a old house there that was torn down. You recently had on that property a homeless encampment a few weeks ago or a few months ago. So it has improved, but improved lighting would be very helpful there. Overall, I think the project would be helpful. It would be a big improvement from where it has been, which is a bunch of empty lots for a lot of years, which haven't been developed. So it would help the area. I wish more of the lots there would be developed, but there's a cost issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Mr. Burgeras.
Good evening, once again, commissioners, staff, residents, our guests.
I'm grateful for the questions that were asked towards the staff and the applicant, and I wrote down eight things that are concerned to me, because I believe that we always look at for the young adults in our, in our community, from K through twelve, but we have seniors that are fifty-five and over, that I consider being jewels of our city. They are the ones that help us to be who we are, and we should never forget them, and we, we always should be able to take care of them in this project, the units, 'cause he mentioned that they're gonna have four for the disabled. Title twenty-four, chapter eleven A. So I, I think about the bathrooms, how are the bathroom, are there gonna be tubs where people climb over, or they're gonna be walk-in showers? Okay, are the, are the, are the sinks are gonna be low? Because, I mean, if we're talking seniors, somebody's gotta be on a wheelchair that may not be able to get up. Okay, so we have that. So we know it's fifty-five and over. I didn't see anything about medical. I don't know if they're gonna have medical downstairs. I don't know if the staff is gonna know something about medical, how to take care of a senior. Okay, we're talking seniors now. Okay, he mentioned security, we can't get the gate, maybe we put up a camera in his place, okay? Is there gonna be a manager living on the premises? Says there are twenty units, okay? So I talked about title twenty-four, chapter, um, chapter eleven A. I enjoy the fire prevention. On, on number forty-five, they're, they're gonna monitor the building, I think the every apartment's gonna have something with fire prevention, and that's on page two sixteen, you know, item number forty-five and sixty-two. You know, and the hundred-and-fifty-foot for the fire department to get in, I'm quite sure the ambulance are gonna be able to get in, 'cause I didn't see anything about ambulance. You know, there's a little things that I consider for the seniors, 'cause if there's a fire, a mishap, a flood, and I also wrote down rain drainage solutions, 'cause we have a lot of water this year. I don't see them putting on their sketches, sneakers, and running, okay? Then it's not gonna happen for seniors. Okay? It's either wheelchairs or two canes to get them out. So those are important to me, 'cause I helped a lot of seniors in my lifetime, and sometimes the seniors are the ones that get hurt. So we don't want anything to happen to them while they're living in the city of Moreno Valley. I can't talk about nobody else, but in the city of Moreno Valley, we look after our jewels. Those are our seniors.
Thank you, Mr. Bergers. Seeing no other speakers, we'll close the public comment portion and deliberate. Microphone? It's a public hearing.
Did they say anybody was gonna be living on the premises? Like a manager?
No, he said nine to five.
Oh, no, he said they're not gonna be living. They're just gonna be in the office?
Oh, before we deliberate, excuse me, would the owner like to come forward and respond to anything that was said in the public comment portion? All right.
To answer some of the questions, it's not assisted living, so it's a senior project, so...
Well, we, we know that. It's not, it's, I know, Rafael, I mean, I guess I'm a senior, but... I was just wondering if there would be a manager there, because some of the projects do have a manager on-site, in case there are any kind of problems, they, you know, they're readily available.
We'll have a manager, they're nine to five. They're not gonna be living there. We'll have an, an on-call twenty-four hours, so...
Yeah, how about a security cameras at all?
There will be security cameras throughout the whole complex.
Okay, yeah, 'cause the area, we all know the area.
Yeah.
So... Okay, that was my question.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you. All right, now we'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and deliberate. Any observations? Feelings? Thoughts?
I, I think it's a good, a good project. It, you know, the, anything that could improve that part of, part of the neighborhood or community is, is good, the, it's, it seems like it's fairly affordable, affordable in housing, and it's a good spot, so I support it. I, I do think, you know, especially Mr. Ritchie's comments about the water, I mean, that, hopefully you do your due diligence with the eastern folks on that and see what's going on.
Anyone else?
I agree that the project is, is, you know, enhance the area there, and I just, it's a nice project. We all, they, you know, all areas of town have their safety issues, but the project itself, it's a, it's a nice, and, and the rent is fabulous.
Yeah.
It's fantastic, so...
A lot of vacant pieces down there, and if this is approved, there's one less, so that's a good thing. Commissioner Harris?
Ah, yes, I, I was inspecting the area, and I noticed that a lot of the homes that are there, they're on these big lots. The front, fronts will look okay, but then the rear portion of the lots will be blighted. And so this project is going to take up the, the whole lot. There won't be the issue of the rear yard that is just either dirt or filled with junk, and unfortunately, a lot of the houses, or some of the houses in that area, that's the condition that they're in. I think it's, it's gonna look great, and I wish that, there's a couple other lots there. I wish they could maybe do the same thing in those slots.
Suggest that they'll buy the next one and do the same thing. Have a mirror image of it. All right, any other comments?
Yeah, I, I tend to agree, you know, that, it, it, you know, how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time, and this is a one bite, it's starting something that's good on that. I mean, it's, it's, it's all, you know, wish you all the very best success on that, and...
I agree.
Buy them all up, so...
All right, let's get a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, let me find the... Wait here. I apologize.
You're gonna make a motion, be prepared.
I'm gonna make a motion, I'm not prepared, all right.
To approve resolution two...
To approve resolution number twenty-nineteen dash oh-nine.
Thank you. Motion from Commissioner Sims, second from Commissioner Baker. Roll call vote?
Roll call vote. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Stephen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sims?
Yes.
Commissioner Dejeanay?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Corsick?
Yes.
Chair Barnes?
Yes. Motion carries seven to zero. Project is approved. Do we have a staff wrap-up?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the action taken by the planning commission tonight is an appealable action. Any interested party would need to submit an appeal in writing directed towards the Community Development Director, citing the specific reason for the appeal and accompanied by the fee. The, an appeal filed would then be scheduled for city council consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, other commission business, there is none. Any staff comments?
No.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day. Second that. Planning Commissioner comments? Oh, all right, well, with that, we are adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the planning commission, February twenty-eighth, twenty-nineteen, seven P.M. here in these chambers. Good night, everyone. Stay dry.